Evening, I'd like to call to order the regular city commission meeting for this, the twenty-fourth day of November twenty twenty-five at six P M. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Dolison.
Here.
Commissioner Mercer, who is not present this evening, Commissioner Dantzler.
Here.
Mayor Protam Yates.
Here.
And Mayor Bert Song.
Here. We will have an invocation by Pastor Tim Clark of the Winter Haven Worship Center. We'll be led in the pledge of allegiance by Vanessa Castilla, MMC City Clerk. Please stand available.
Pleased to be here tonight. Let's pray together. Lord, tonight we thank you for your word, and your word says, oh, give thanks unto the Lord because you are so good. Lord, in this season, in this week, Lord, of Thanksgiving, in this city, we have so much to be thankful for. Lord, we're thankful that we have a great place to live. We thank you, Lord, for all the employees of the city of Winter Haven who make our city so great. Lord, we thank you for all of our first responders, the police department, the fire department, all of those who work so diligently to create a safe space for all of us to live in. And, Lord, we're thankful for these commissioners. Lord, we thank you for wisdom and insight, Lord, to lead our city in the way that they should go. Lord, we thank you for the progress that we're making. And, Lord, we thank you that in every situation, even the things that they're dealing with tonight, Lord, they have supernatural wisdom to be able to govern and to make the great decisions that we know they will to keep us in an incredible city. Lord, we're thankful for your blessing upon our city. We're thankful for the privilege to have the freedom we do to assemble together. We pray all these things in your hand upon each commissioner, each employee of the city in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, commissioners, we have no presentations, no developments of note, uh, no minutes. Comments from the audience. The first one is, um, Ann Beth Kuhn. And what we'll do, we will call you up when we are dealing with that particular item on the agenda. David Berry, you didn't put what you wanted to speak in reference to.
I'm sorry, I thought that was a sign of cheat.
All right, so we'll take you off. And so, so that leave you, Dan. Come forward, state your name and address for the record. We give you five minutes.
My name is Dan Chesnick. I live at eight-six-one Oleander Drive in Winter Haven. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes. You, the city commission, have charged us, Theater Winter Haven, with managing the Ritz Theater, and I just wanted to give a quick update on how things are going over there. And, um, and it's going well. Each week, we are bringing in about seven hundred people to the various events that we have down there at the Ritz between the shows that we produce and also the shows that we are producing for others, like the Symphony Guild. We did a fundraiser for State of the City. So each week, we're bringing about seven hundred people down there. Our Tribute Tuesdays are going great. We had the Beatles there last week, a tribute to the Beatles. And we will have Elvis coming in after our Thanksgiving break. We had to add a second show to accommodate the demand for that, so there'll be over six hundred people downtown that evening. Our Vaudeville Nights are going well. We'll have the Rat Pack coming in for their holiday celebration in a couple of weeks. And each Thursday, we're doing Nitro Bingo, which is averaging over a hundred people per night that we do that. As we roll into December, we will be adding, or in January, we'll be adding our first Friday events that we're partnering with Destroyer Media on. And in December, we will be layering in our Friday Night Date Nights. We've been working closely with the city on this. Friday Night Date Nights are where we will provide childcare at the Ritz in the lounge for two hours before a show, so they can go out and have dinner and enjoy the town, come back, see the show, and then pick up their kids at the end. But at the city's request, it's not tied to any particular show, so people can drop their kids off there and just enjoy the town, come on back, pick up their kids and go. It's only going to be fifteen dollars per head to do that for people to enjoy the whole evening out on, in Winter Haven. Also, we're going to be layering in our Smart Mouse Saturdays and our game nights on Saturdays, and we're going to be layering in our Sunday Fun Days as we come into the new year. So at that point, we'll be much, much closer to providing that entertainment that we've been trying to do six days a week at the Ritz and trying to bring people down every single night for some reason in there. A couple of things I'm really excited about, too, are we held a meeting with all of the downtown restaurants, and we are working together with many of them who expressed interest on creating dinner and show packages so they can enjoy an evening out on the town as part of a package with the show. And we are working with downtown residences to have our shows as part of their whole amenities package. So we're really doing a whole lot of work and trying to link up with all of the downtown entities, and we're really trying to do a lot of programming down there to get as many people in as we possibly can. That's my update. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ordinance is second reading, ordinance O twenty-five thirty. Would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash thirty, an ordinance amending ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five, the twenty thirty-five Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan, twenty thirty-five Future Land Use Map Series, by revising the future land use map series by assigning neighborhood support future land use to one annexed parcel, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. General location, a parcel generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Eighth Street Northwest, U.S. Highway seventeen, and Avenue X Northwest. The area covered by this request is zero point three four plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, would you give us a overview? We've heard it three times now.
Yes, sir. In brevity, this is, as the city attorney said, is a land use change to assign neighborhood support future land use. This property was annexed into the city on July twenty-eighth of this year. Petitioner intends to develop the property with a thirty-six-hundred-square-foot adult daycare center. Nothing has changed since first reading. Planning Commission heard this October seventh, twenty twenty-five, and voted to recommend approval of the request with one member of the public speaking about concerns about access and traffic. Staff recommends commission approve ordinance O twenty-five thirty on second and final hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O dash twenty-five dash thirty on second reading.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to O twenty-five thirty may do so at this time. Seeing an unclosed public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye poses by the same sign. Hearing done, O twenty-five thirty is adopted. O twenty-five thirty-one, would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash thirty-one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, by assigning commercial highway C three zoning district to an annexed parcel, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. General location, a parcel generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Eighth Street Northwest slash U.S. Highway seventeen and Avenue X Northwest. The area covered by this request is zero point three four plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a companion ordinance to O twenty-five thirty. This particular ordinance, twenty-five thirty-one, pertains to the zoning on the same piece of property. Staff recommends city commission approve this on second and final hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O dash twenty-five dash thirty-one on second reading.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to O twenty-five thirty-one may do so at this time. Seeing an unclosed public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye poses by the same sign. Hearing done, O twenty-five thirty-one is adopted. O twenty-five thirty-two, would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash thirty-two, an ordinance amending ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five, the twenty thirty-five Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan, two thousand thirty-five Future Land Use Map Series, by revising the future land use map series by assigning institutional future land use to one annexed parcel, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. General location, five hundred Fourth Street East, Juanita. The area covered by this request is thirteen point eight nine plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a request by the city regarding a parcel that we acquired and annexed into the city July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. This is, property was acquired for use by the Water Department, which, as you can see from the image, wastewater treatment plant three is due east of this property, and the parcel in between the two is also owned by the city. This was heard by the Planning Commission October seventh during their regular meeting and voted to recommend approval of this request. There were no members of the public that spoke. Staff recommends city commission approve ordinance O twenty-five thirty-two on second and final reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O dash twenty-five dash thirty-two on second reading.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to O twenty-five thirty-two may do so at this time. Seeing an unclosed public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye poses by the same sign. Hearing done, O twenty-five thirty-two is adopted. O twenty-five thirty-three, would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash thirty-three, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, by assigning public institutional PI zoning district to an annexed parcel, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. General location, five hundred Fourth Street East, Juanita. The area covered by this request is thirteen point eight nine plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance O twenty-five thirty-three is a companion ordinance to accompany O twenty-five thirty-two, which you just heard and voted on. This pertains to the zoning on the same piece of property. Staff recommends city commission approve ordinance O twenty-five thirty-three on second and final hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O dash twenty-five dash thirty-three on second reading.
Thank you. I'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to O twenty-five thirty-three may come forth at this time. Seeing an unclosed public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye poses by the same sign. Hearing done, O twenty-five thirty-three is adopted. O twenty-five thirty-four, would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash thirty-four, an ordinance amending ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five, the twenty thirty-five Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan, by revising the future land use map series by amending the future land use on a portion of a city-owned parcel from neighborhood suburban and neighborhood support future land uses to institutional future land use, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date. General location, the subject area is generally located on the east side of Buckeye Loop Road, approximately one thousand one hundred feet south of Oakhurst Drive. The area covered by this request is ten point two five plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance O twenty-five thirty-four is a request by the city of Winter Haven as the petitioner, as the attorney has stated, to change the land use from neighborhood suburban and neighborhood support future land uses to institutional future land use. This is property that was purchased by the city. It's part of a three hundred and seventy-plus-or-minus-acre purchase that was completed in December of two thousand twenty-three. Water Department proposes to develop their permanent administrative office building, warehousing, and associated parking on this ten point two-five acre campus. This was heard by the Planning Commission October seventh, twenty twenty-five, and they voted to recommend approval of these requests. No members of the public spoke during that meeting. Staff recommends city commission approve ordinance O twenty-five thirty-four on second and final hearing. Nothing has changed since your first hearing on this.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O dash twenty-five dash thirty-four on second reading.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to this particular ordinance may come forth, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Dewey Nguyen. I live at fourteen seventy-five Buckeye Loop Road. If you look at this diagram here, it's the house right there directly across the street. I'm also a part of AHAQ. I've been on the board for, for two years here, and just a little bit on the background, I do have a real estate background with development as well. Uh, my concern is having this site here in a residential area, um, it's going to negatively impact knowing the property values, it's going to create more noise, but also the traffic. I've lived at this house for ten years. I never had any plans to move, and I've seen traffic grow tremendously over the last ten years. At certain times of the day, it's hard to pull out. If you have a trailer, it makes it even way more difficult. I just really ask you guys really consider the impact and the future impact of the residents around this site. And vote no or table this and actually educate us on why this, this site is what you guys need for your project. Uh, I feel like Winter Haven has a lot of property or can acquire different properties to where it might better suit something like this, and I don't know what, you know. I just don't feel like this is the right spot. You know, when you look at a development, it usually conforms with the area. I don't feel like this is conforming with the local area. That's all I'd say.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this ordinance? Come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Okay, I live at fourteen ninety-one Buckeye Loop Road.
Your name?
My name is Patricia Glasscock.
Thank you.
And we are right across the street from, uh, everything that they're putting in now. It's lots of noise. We, uh, my husband and I came to the meeting on October seventh, and, uh, none of this was told to us. We didn't get up and speak because we had no idea what was going on there. We were just told that it was the Water Department and administrative, uh, buildings and warehouse. Um, we, my husband has, um, looked into it more and found that there are trucks coming in, like, I don't know how many a day. We'd like to know that. Uh, they're bringing in, uh, a million gallons of water a day, which is going to be injected into the ground, and our concern is that we have well water and our septic system, and there's, um, and we want to know how that will affect it. There's an orange grove that's beside where they're building now, and they put in a big well before they, uh, planted the orange grove, and that affected our water. There was lots of smell, lots of dirt, lots of, um, iron and other things in it. Uh, we had to put in a new well, uh, which was very expensive, and since, I don't know how long ago that was, but since then, we've had to have people out, I don't know how many times, uh, to try to get the water back to normal, and it's, uh, we spent thousands and thousands of dollars, not only us, but our neighbors, too. And so, uh, we, I'd also like to address the, um, the noise coming in. If we have big trucks that are coming in and out, I'd like to know how many. And also, uh, having the sound barrier was, um, addressed before, and y'all decided that they didn't need a sound barrier. Well, since then, I don't know what's going on, but, um, the city, or somebody has come by and cut down all the trees in our front yard, every house along across the street, the trees are gone, and so now the traffic is very loud. Not only that, the people come by with their boom boxes late at night, and it already shook our house before, but now, I mean, it shook the windows, and now it just seems like it's shaking the whole house. If a car comes along at three o'clock in the morning, and it wakes us from over a mile away in each direction, and, um, we don't even know what's going on there. Is our turn lane being put in so that trucks can come in? That wasn't addressed before, and we still don't know what that is. I'd like to hear about that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, I will close the public hearing and reopen the commission meeting. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had a couple of questions. I've been communicating with Mr. Nguyen back in the back, and I want to ask him a couple of questions. Have you, have you seen the configuration? Would you mind coming up? I just want to ask you a couple of questions because you brought some concerns to me already. I just want to see, have you seen the configuration of what they're talking about doing out there about where the buildings would go and that right there? Have you seen that?
I've seen, I mean, it's massive.
Pardon?
It's not a small building. It's, it's fairly large.
And your house is right directly across from the parking lot, I guess?
The one right there with the pool.
Okay. So this was explained to me the other night, that this is like a level, would you call it, Eric, a little three or C-type development is going to require a certain amount of landscaping and birmingham or something? Could you explain that to the people, please?
Only that it would require a type C buffer.
Type C buffer, that's where it is.
Yeah, which is a, which is a standard buffer, um, for, uh, separation between residential and commercial type uses. However, I would note, as a, as I mentioned in, um, agenda review, the building's being set back as far as they are, um, and as well as the parking, there's significant area to enhance or increase that buffer yard, certainly.
How do we, how would we make sure that's part of this deal? Because I understand where these, where these two people are talking about.
Yeah, it's a, it's a city project, so it would just have to be budgeted for and shown on the site plan when the site plan is, the final site plan is developed for the site.
Would that include things like birmingham potentially, uh, for, I don't know how to enhance, how to stop the sound from going on everybody's property, but I, I can understand how to maybe improve the site and what it looks like.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, be, being a city project, we could, we could do a berm if we wanted to. Um, we could do, you know, tree buffer yards, um, whatever it is we feel appropriate to, um, to buffer the...
And this is a project that the Water Department's doing, right? So this would be Gary and his crew. Have they looked at other locations and sites? And I know that the land we bought, there's not that much high land, or tell me how we came up with this particular location, or?
I'd have to defer on, to Gary or to Michael on that one.
Gary, can you come to the podium, please?
Mr. Mayor, I will say that, or Commissioner Dancer, this is the upland portion of the three hundred and seventy acres that were acquired.
Right.
As you know, the balance of this site is to be, uh, wetland restoration, nature park, uh, aquifer recharge, uh, and, and the, the delivery of water into that system is through infrastructural piping. It's not trucked in or anything to that effect. It is, in fact, there's utility work that is occurring at present time to get utilities out to this site, but I'll let Mr. Hubbard speak to, um, use of the property for this particular purpose.
Gary, before you start, T, you talked about the piping going out. The lady that talked about her well, would she now have access to city water if she were to choose that?
Uh, I'm, Gary's nodding his head. It certainly, that, that gives you access. Also, the, the tree work that was mentioned out there, that's not associated with, with work that, that we're doing. That very well could be, um, some of the hardening work that, uh, the electric utility in that area would be doing. I believe that would be Tico along that corridor.
Okay. So go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, City Manager. Manager, good afternoon, good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. So the, the question is, you know, how did we arrive at this site, you know, for development? And I'll tell you, it was a very long process. We looked at a number of parcels. We specifically, we're looking the Dundee Road area because it's kind of the center of our service area. Um, our service area is about twice the size of the city limits itself. Um, when we actually were negotiating, uh, other parcels and we're not successful. And, and, uh, summer of twenty-three began discussions with, uh, the owners of the Bradco Farms property, and we were able to come to a, uh, a reasonable solution to purchase that property, which would include the development of a nature park with, uh, wetland restoration, aquifer recharge. So the benefits of the product, of the project were far-reaching beyond just the utility complex. So with a, with a nature park such that will, this complex will back up to, supports the one water, uh, efforts that... one water efforts that we have been undertaking for years and years. And this is actually the first project associated with a sapphire necklace. That's kind of how we arrived at this particular location.
Well, do you have other locations that doesn't affect these homeowners that could be high and dry? I know, I know the, the high and dry land is pretty, is pretty much a premium with the Bradco property because it was mostly all wet, if memory serves.
Yeah, we, we don't have any other parcels that would meet the need.
Other than this?
That's correct.
So the, the nice lady talked about injection into the water table, too. Is that going to be so deep that it would not affect her well, or could it potentially affect her water supply? And if so, would we offer her some sort of an option to tie into the city water?
So definitely she'll be able to tie into the city water. I can't tell you whether it would affect her well or not, not knowing the details of her well, how deep it is. We will be recharging the Upper Florida and Aquifer, but we will be recharging with water that's drinking water acceptable. So should be a positive impact if anything else.
Do you, do you have, do you have a way of verifying if somebody's water has been affected by some of our activities that we could potentially, you know, make amends on that? Is that, is that something proved or not proved? It's word of mouth, hearsay, whatever?
Would be hearsay. The, without doing some detailed testing on their well to know the depth and all of the details associated with the drilling of that well, there'd be hard to determine whether our efforts would, would impact their well. But as I said, the recharge of the Upper Florida and Aquifer would, would be with water that's meeting drinking water quality approved by the state. So if there were any impacts, it should be positive.
All right. And Commissioner Dancer, I'd just add, we're not doing any water withdrawal on this site. It is all, it is all aquifer recharge. Typically, when you see impacts with adjacent property wells, it would be tied more so if you're pulling more water out of, to the, out of the aquifer in that general area. And that is complete opposite of what we're doing here. And the water that is to supply the development on this upland is potable water from the city's water supply that will be infrastructurally piped to it.
Eric, you told me that this building is roughly 300 feet from the hard road. Is that right? Or do you remember exactly what?
Sure. It varies between, you know, that, that very front building, the truck shelter, I'd say is, is probably 85 to 90 feet from the road right away. And then as you go all the way back to the rear, it's, it's 300 plus.
I guess what I'm trying to tell Mr. Nguyen is there's going to be an enhanced effort to do more landscaping out there. I know it doesn't medic, doesn't mitigate what you're feeling your damages would be, but I feel like we gotta, I don't know what, I don't know what to think. But do you have a well? You have a well? This? Okay. Okay, that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
A couple of questions. So we talked about at a agenda review, how many customers the current office is utilizing or sees a day? And it was like 100 customers a day. The hours of operation for that existing water office are, was that nine to five or?
No, it's on Mondays, I want to say, Gary, I'm trying to think what it is. I know it's reduced to 10 to 3 on.
10 to 3.
10 to 3, Tuesday through Friday. And Mondays, we, we certainly start earlier to accommodate, you know, morning traffic. But the, you know, we're still going to maintain a presence. This wouldn't be the only location for a payment. And we're seeing more and more activity switched to our online portals for that. Staff that report to this site, vast majority, I'd say probably 95 plus percent of staff, it is coming in because it's a water utility operation pre 7:00 AM. And they are out 3:30, most of them, 4:30, all of them. So it, it takes the traffic that would be associated with this site to off-peak times.
And so just, just, I guess, in, in my decision making and how I'm thinking about it is, even if like, if all the customers just started coming to this location, those customers are going to be coming mid-morning to early afternoon. So that's your influx of traffic times there. It won't be when everybody's coming home from work. It won't be when everybody's leaving from work.
Correct.
And then it does seem to me, I mean, the way that the city of Winter Haven limits are set, this is a more centralized location in the, in the grand scheme of things of, how the city limits are drawn out and our, our crazy lines that we have here. We don't work in a perfect rectangle box. We have, we have lines going all over the place. So it does seem like you get southeast Winter Haven, northwest Winter Haven. Everybody's going to have kind of the same commute to get there. Outside of the customer base, you, you had mentioned, we could see workers arriving there as early as 7:00 AM, or, or they'd be arriving earlier and leaving at 7:00.
Earlier than that, because their, their shifts are basically starting at 7:00 AM timeframe.
And that would consist of essentially them getting out of their car, clocking in, going to get into the water truck, and then exit? Or are they moving heavy machinery? Are they, are they running forklifts? Are they creating a lot of noise during that time of arrival and also their time of leaving?
So most of the activities would be them coming to work in the morning and getting their shift assignments, then leaving. There would be some forklift activity, but primarily related to the warehouse within the warehouse itself. So there would be, of course, some deliveries to the warehouse from time to time.
But the main flux of noise would be concentrated inside of the building.
That is correct.
Gotcha. Okay. And so in this approval, we wouldn't seek to create that landscaping buffer to be larger. This, this is just a, an approval of, of use and.
Land use and subsequently zoning.
And zoning. So at what point would the, the landscaping discussion come in for approval?
So that the actual site plan and design doesn't come back to the city commission for an approval on that. Certainly at the commission's request, we can bring that for informational purposes. I think it's very clear to us, what, what you're saying is how do we enhance the frontage on Buckeye Loop Road to minimize that? I would also say that we've just brought on the engineering team that will do the design criteria package for this. I don't remember who was the liaison to that. It may have been Commissioner Mercer. But based upon comments from residents this evening and what we're hearing from the commission, you know, making every effort to push buildings as far back in as possible, and to enhance that frontage to minimize any noise or visibility. You know, when this, when this facility closes at the end of the day, it closes, you know, at 4:30, you know, probably the last person out the door, no later than 5 o'clock. Then it's shut down until the next day, including weekends. Now, you'll have staff that report back here for emergency callouts in the middle of the night and such. But, you know, those are all things that we can guide with the design criteria team and the ultimate, I think we're doing this as a design build to make sure that those are factors based upon what, what I'm hearing from the commission this evening.
Okay. And Eric, you said it was a level three buffer or what?
Type C. Type C. Type C is what the code requires. We can always do more.
Okay. And so what are there, is there a type D, a type E? I mean, like?
I think it goes A through F, I believe. I'd have to get with Sean Byers to get the exact.
And so this type C buffer, if you went to a D buffer, how much more, what, what, I mean, I'm trying to get an understanding of, from buffer to buffer, how much more or less you would see?
I don't have those details with me exactly what. I know a type C requires one overstory tree, one understory tree, and I believe it's 10 shrubs for every 100 feet of frontage.
So Mayor Protem, again, just going back to what Mr. Labby said, that's the minimum. So we can do whatever is deemed appropriate in there. I had mentioned during agenda review in response to these concerns, berming that area to build it up to a, you know, a suitable height that creates a noise barrier. The planting of, of overstory trees in there, certainly, you know, you're going to space those to ensure the longevity and the sustainability of those trees. You're not going to put oak trees within 10 feet of each other. You're going to space those out. But what you put is understory and is additional landscape in there creates any type of sound barrier that would be, be warranted. We've done that in the past. When the old Chain of Lakes project was first built, it had significant berming along the entire US 17 corridor that was heavily landscaped. So very similar.
And the last point that I'll make is with, with a side question to it, is we already own this land. It was purchased through the, the Bradco Farms acquisition. Gary, you said you tried efforts in trying to obtain additional parcels or different, if, you know, more land in it for a new location. I'm guessing nothing was below $1 million, $2 million in any of those discussions.
No, they were not.
So we'd have to buy additional land and, and spend millions of dollars just for the dirt, and then move forward with the project. And this project, it, it's a necessary project for a city that our size.
Yeah, we looked at at least two or three other sites on Dundee Road to try to locate this project.
Thank you. I forgot one other question about the road. Is that a county road out there? Is, is that, or is that a city road?
County road.
So if you guys want to do ingress and egress, like, like the lady asked about, like turning lanes and the traffic and all that, is that a county concern? Or can we, because I, I'm concerned about this cutting on and off of that road with all the traffic, and we're not going to have some sort of.
We envision that there'll be a turning lanes both north and south.
County will have to approve that?
Yes, sir.
Do we, have we had discussion with them, or is that going to be a problem? Or can you think of any problems with that, Eric, or?
I don't think there will be any issues. I, we will have to get a driveway connection permit from the county, and they will review our site plan at that time when we apply for the driveway connection permit, and they will make us do improvements.
Well, clearly, I won't be here when you guys approve, when you would set up to approve their landscaping plan. And I encourage you to go to like level F and put, put 1,000 trees out. You know me and trees. I want to see as many trees, as many buffers as we can. But I, I tend to concur with you, Brian. There's, there's no place else. I mean, we've tried to put it someplace else, and I don't know where else we can put it. And it is important. And I just feel bad for the residents out there that are going to have to live with this. But stick with us for a while and let us try to mitigate as much as we can and see what happens. And then, you know, I don't know what else to say other than that. So.
Mayor and Commissioners, one thing just to point out, our, our protocol for projects, and this is certainly in the, in the, we've just brought on Dewberry as the engineer for the design criteria package, is an example. Last Monday, we held a meeting off of Lake Hartridge with residents out there as we're working through the design package for Fire Station 5. That, that's the approach that we're doing with all projects. This will be no different of bringing on that engineering team and working with residents to make sure that they're involved in that process and understand what's going on. And we have an opportunity to hear even deeper into their concerns to factor that into a most appropriate design.
Okay. Well, I'd, I'd just like to say that as far as the, the site plan and the development of the facility that we're talking about, that will come to us. We would like to have that come to us.
We'll bring that back in as we have more information.
So that we can, at least the commission can be involved in find determination. I just want to add one thing. And there's no science to prove this, but probably what we are doing out there with the injections will improve, improve the water of the residents. All right?
That is correct.
Yes. And so I think, I don't think the residents would realize and know that from a long-term perspective for the greater Winter Haven, this project is very important. And it will contribute to the future of water supply in the city of Winter Haven. And water is one of the things that is perhaps, I won't say the greatest challenge that this municipality and Polk County is going to face, but it's right up there. And so this is, is, is a major, major, major effort that we have been able to implement by the purchase of, of the Bradco property. And I just want the residents here to know that water, by no stretch of the imagination, is not one of the most critical items facing the entire Polk County, the entire Central Florida region. And so we're going to make sure that this commission is, is that the residents, when this, this, this building is, is built and stuff, we're going to make it as if we lived across the street. All right. Is there anyone else? If not, our club?
My name's Charles Glasscock. I live at 1491 Buckeye Loop Road. And I'd like to have, you got 370 acres you bought. I'd like to see a map of 370 acres to see where it lined up near Sage Road. If you've got a map, you know, the start of this little thing you got here.
Yeah, we can provide that.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. And then, because you got Sage Road, does it connect Sage Road? Regardless, you've got a lot, and traffic would be no issue at that point. It shouldn't be a problem.
It's wetland.
Well, that's wetlands, too.
That's this area. That's high ground.
We can, we can provide Mr. Glasscock a map of that.
You'll provide her with the map.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you.
Can I ask another question?
Go ahead.
Okay. We were talking about the, the turn lanes. Okay, the turn lanes are going to be taken out of my front yard. Already the 15-foot easement is marked.
I, I have to say to you, ma'am, we don't know where the turn lanes will be.
I assume it'll go.
They haven't.
In front of the entryway.
I'm just saying, they haven't been designed. They haven't been planned. They haven't been permitted. And not only will the city of Winter Haven be involved, but Polk County will have to be involved. And so we're sort of ahead of that right now.
Okay. Can I suggest something? Okay. On Dundee Road, where the, or the care center is, or where the surgery center is, the people don't, the people don't turn in right there. The road is farther down, the entryway, and then it comes down. Okay. Where we are now, we're just, we're six houses in a row, and we're all in the county. And the turn lanes, if it goes on any of the roads that are entering now, it's going to be in our front yards. Can it go farther down the road where you turn in and then go to the parking lot?
The point that I'm making to you, ma'am, is that those discussions will be forthcoming, and they are not here yet. So I, we can't tell you.
Okay, so would we, would we be notified?
Yes, absolutely.
Because we weren't notified of this meeting.
You'll be notified.
Told us.
You'll be notified.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just want to go back to, you know, property values and the impact that this would have in the immediate area. I mean, I understand this is a big project for the Winter Haven. I understand it's beneficial to the water. But it's definitely going to impact our property values immediately right there. I mean.
Probably in a positive way.
I, I, I don't see how that's positive. I mean, we're going to see a big government building. I'm, like I said, I'm, my background's real estate. If I saw this in my front yard, I know it's going to impact my property. If I saw this in my front yard, I know it's going to impact my property value 100%. There's no, there's no denying that.
All right.
So is there anything the city has planned to compensate us or anything for our property values? I mean, you're just asking us to eat it, right? But we've spent years building equity in our property.
I mean, you know, we hear your concern and so, all right. Anyone else?
I want to say one more thing about the trees were cut down. We were here meeting October 7th and the planner, at that point, he said the trees are going to be the buffer for the sound. And since then, the trees have been cut down, huge oak trees all down Buckeye Loop Road in front of our house.
But what we, what we said earlier, sir, is that on the west side of the road, we have nothing to do with that.
Who's doing it then?
That's the county apparently, or Tico.
Likely Tico.
Yes, we have nothing to do with that. We have nothing to do with it. No control.
That's what I'm saying. You guys are talking about, you're going to have a meeting with us and tell us what's going on. We're going to.
What's on the, what will be on the east side, the east side of the road, not the west.
I'll call my county commissioner and we'll.
All right. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. I'll close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposeds, by the same sign. Hearing none. The resolution passes. The next one is just dealing with zoning. You want to read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Row dash 25 dash 35, an ordinance amending chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Winter Haven, Florida by rezoning a portion of the city-owned parcel from single-family residential small lot R2 and Conservation CN zoning districts to Public Institutional PI zoning district, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date. General location, the subject area is generally located on the east side of Buckeye Loop Road, approximately 1,100 feet south of Oakhurst Drive. The area covered by this request is 10.25 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, just zoning.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is ordinance 2535. It's companion ordinance to the one we just read. This one pertains to the zoning on the same property. Staff recommends this be approved on second and final hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O dash 25 dash 35 on second reading.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to O 2535 may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. In the discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposeds, by the same sign. Hearing none. Ordinance O dash 25 dash 35 is adopted. Commissioners, you have consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety as presented.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to any item on the consent agenda may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposeds, by the same sign. Hearing none. The consent agenda is adopted in its entirety. Okay. We have no resolutions on its first reading. The second reading will be on December the 8th. Ordinance O 2536, which read by title only, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash 25 dash 36, an ordinance amending ordinance 23 dash 25, the 2035 Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan by revising the Future Land Use Map Series by amending the future land use on one parcel and a portion of another parcel from neighborhood suburban future land use to neighborhood support future land use, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date. The general location, the subject property is generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Thompson Nursery Road and Cunningham Road and south of Thompson Nursery Road, approximately 330 feet east of Cunningham Road. The area covered by this request is 46.21 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, Vmar DEV LLC and Cunningham Investors LLC are the petitioners and are requesting city amend the 2035 Future Land Use Map on a parcel and a portion of another parcel from neighborhood suburban future land use to neighborhood support future land use and also rezone the same parcel and a portion of another parcel from PUD zoning district to Commercial Highway C3 zoning district. This is 46.21 plus or minus acres located at the northeast corner of the intersection of the Thompson Nursery Road realignment and Cunningham Road. Subject property is currently subject to PUD ordinance O 2172. The petitioners propose to develop the property with commercial uses. A maximum of 503,118 square feet of commercial could be developed on this site. Subject property is located, as I mentioned, at the north and south of the Thompson Nursery Road realignment, which is an arterial road that when completed in 203031 will ultimately connect from Highway 27 to the intersection of Highway 17 and State Road 540. Uses surrounding the property include Lake Grass and drainage and retention to the north, Lake Reed and the Terranova subdivision to the east, the Terranova and Vilamar subdivisions to the south, and the Vilamar subdivision to the west. Your packet includes an analysis of the water and wastewater impacts associated with this property. The requested land use is consistent with the property's frontage on an arterial road in close proximity to intersections with collector roads. The requested C3 zoning district is consistent with the neighborhood support future land use designation. There's no direct financial impact to the city with these requests. Planning Commission, it's November 3rd, 2025, regular meeting voted to recommend approval of these requests. Two members of the public spoke with concerns about traffic, flooding, and potential crime. Staff's conclusions are that the proposed neighborhood support future land use and C3 zoning district is consistent with the subject property's frontage on an arterial road in close proximity to intersections with collector roads. And the city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan encourages commercial use to focus into nodes centered around key intersections within the city. Further supporting this request is the presence of over 1,700 residential units in the Vilamar subdivision alone and presence of 1,000-plus additional housing units within a short distance. Close proximity of these neighborhoods to this proposed development has the ability to reduce the number and length of vehicle trips onto the surrounding roadway network through a more compact development pattern. And finally, there is sufficient public infrastructure capacity to accommodate the maximum theoretical development under C3. Staff recommends city commission advance ordinance O 2536 to second reading to be held at the first meeting in December.
Thank you. All right. The second reading will be 12/8. Is there any questions, discussion? All right. Would you read O 2537 by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash 25 dash 37, an ordinance amending chapter 21 of Code of Ordinances of the City of Winter Haven, Florida by rezoning one parcel and a portion of another parcel from planned unit development PUD zoning district to Commercial-Highway C3 zoning district, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. General location, the subject property is generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Thompson Nursery Road and Cunningham Road and south of Thompson Nursery Road, approximately 330 feet east of Cunningham Road. The area covered by this request is 46.21 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is your companion ordinance that accompanies 2536. It assigns the Commercial Highway C3 zoning district to the property in question. Again, staff recommends that this ordinance 2537 be advanced to second reading to be held December 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance O 2539, which read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash 25 dash 39, an ordinance of the City of Winter Haven, Florida relating to mandatory structural inspections for condominium and cooperative buildings, implementing subsection 553.88911 Florida statutes 2025, creating section 5 dash 24 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, requiring condominiums, cooperative associations, and owners subject to mandatory structural inspections to schedule or commence repairs for substantial structural deterioration within 365 days after the city's receipt of a Phase II inspection report, provided for conflicts, provided for severability, provided for codification, and the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, in response to the condominium building collapse in Surfside, Florida, the Florida Legislature passed legislation addressing the safety of condominium and cooperative association buildings with the passage of House Bill 913 during the 25 legislative session. This bill requires local governments to add language to their code addressing structural repairs for condominium and cooperative association buildings within a specified timeframe. To comply, section 5 dash 24 will be added to chapter 5 of the Winter Haven Code of Ordinances. This section will require those condominium and cooperative associations, which are required by law to perform milestone inspections to schedule or commence repairs for substantial structural deterioration within 365 days of the building official receiving a Phase II inspection report. There are presently seven condominium or cooperative associations located in the city which are subject to milestone inspections. These would be those containing buildings three or more habitable stories in height, and these are required at 30 years of age and every 10 years thereafter. Staff recommends city commission advance ordinance 25 dash 39 to second reading to be held December 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. O 2540, would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Row dash 25 dash 40, an ordinance of the City of Winter Haven, Florida recognizing a contribution from the estate of Velma Sewell Daniels in the amount of $258,879.07 to the Winter Haven Public Library, amending ordinance number O dash 25 dash 29, adopting the city winter Haven budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, the city has received a bequest in the amount of $258,879.07 from the estate of Velma Sewell Daniels, a longtime resident and supporter of the Winter Haven Public Library. To properly record this contribution, the current fiscal year budget will be amended to reflect an increase in the City of Winter Haven Library Fund designation of other contributions revenue and make the funds available for library-related expenditures within the library fund. Staff recommends that this item be advanced to second hearing to be held December 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, would you read O 2541 by title only, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Row dash 25 dash 41, an ordinance of the City of Winter Haven, Florida recognizing the roll forward of open purchase orders from fiscal year 2024 dash 2025 to fiscal year 2025 dash 2026, amending ordinance number O dash 25 dash 29, appropriation of funds for defraying the expenses of the municipal government of the City of Winter Haven for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, pursuant to Florida statutes, the city commission may amend the budget by ordinance to appropriate and expend funds that were not anticipated in the originally approved budget. Purchase orders roll forward representing contractual or encumbered obligations that were approved in fiscal year 2425 but not fully extended by year end. These are projects that were funded in last year's budget, commenced or perhaps not commenced, that the money stays with the project and rolls forward. In accordance with established accounting standards and budgetary control procedures, these encumbrances have been reestablished in fiscal year 2526 to ensure proper accountability for prior year commitments. The total value of the rolled forward purchase orders affects current year budget. However, this action does not constitute new spending. The total budget amendment of $58,118,081.01 reflects outstanding encumbrances as of September 30th, 2025. Those are detailed in the attachments within your packet. The amendment increases the current year's budget across various funds with corresponding funding from prior year's available fund balances. Staff recommends advancing ordinance 2541 to second hearing to be held December 8th, which will roll forward open purchase orders from fiscal year 2425 to fiscal year 2526. Thank you.
Thank you. Second reading will be on December the 8th. O 2542, would you read by title only, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash 25 dash 42, an ordinance amending ordinance number O dash 24 dash 44, appropriation of funds for defraying the expenses of the municipal government of the City of Winter Haven for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2024, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, pursuant to Florida statutes, the city may amend its budget within 60 days of the fiscal year end. As part of the review for fiscal year 2425, staff evaluated project expenditures to ensure adequate budget authorization existed within the fiscal year in which the costs were incurred. During this process, it was determined that several projects required budget adjustments to fully fund expenditures. These amendments are necessary to align budgetary expenditures with actual activity and to maintain compliance with government accounting standards, board requirements, and the city's financial policies. These changes correct budgetary shortfalls identified during the year-end closeout process and ensure the city's records accurately reflect authorized and expended funds. As I discussed during the agenda review, a lot of times, projects will have funds that come from multiple funds within the budget. This aligns those funds, making a transfer from one fund to another to align with the capital project on which those dollars were spent. Staff recommends city commission advance ordinance 2542 to second reading to be held on December 8th, which will approve the subject budget amendments to the prior fiscal year budget to ensure compliance with financial reporting requirements and to accurately reflect project expenditures completed within fiscal year 2425. Thank you.
Thank you. Second reading will be on December 8th. New business, Grant and Aid Application Review Committee. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. On September 22nd, 2025, the city commission passed resolution R 2548 to further define the Grant and Aid Application Review Committee structure and role. Included in this resolution was a requirement that committee vacancies be advertised by the city clerk for application, reviewed by the city manager or designee to make a recommendation to the city commission for appointments. One vacancy on the committee currently exists. Six applications were submitted for consideration. All six applications were reviewed by myself. In addition, I solicited feedback from current members of the Grant and Aid Application Review Committee. After careful review and consideration, Mr. David Berry's application is being recommended for the city commission's consideration of appointment. In addition to 30 years of nonprofit experience and 21 years serving vulnerable populations in Winter Haven, Mr. Berry also pledged that if appointed to serve on the Grant and Aid Application Review Committee, the mission of Winter Haven, of which he is affiliated, will not apply for grant funding, allowing him to avoid any real or perceived conflicts of interest. In addition, on November 6th of this year, the committee met to review the fiscal year 26 process, which has been completed now, review recommendations and guidance from the city attorney, and discuss potential refinements. Refinements to the process include the following. One, require nonprofit agencies to have been in operation and providing services to Winter Haven residents a minimum of two years at the time of application. Number two, expand reporting requirements to include mandatory proof of funds spent. That is specific to those that had received funding prior through the grant aid program, ensuring that those dollars were appropriately spent. Number three, require all submitted reporting documents to be witnessed and notarized. And number four, implement an agency representative system for all public meetings of the Grant and Aid Committee, thereby having those nonprofits that are applying designate a single individual that will speak on their behalf and be able to answer questions of the committee during their hearings. There's no financial impact for this item. Staff recommends the city commission consider the appointment of Mr. David Berry to the Grant and Aid Application Review Committee and accept the recommendations of the Grant and Aid Application Review Committee with respect to process refinements for fiscal year 2627. And I will point out that Mr. Berry is here in the audience with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the appointment and the changes as presented.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion?
One thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Berry, I want to thank you for your willingness to serve. That's, you do yeoman's, the committee that does that does yeoman's work, so we thank you for that. And I, and I'm, I don't know how much money the mission got from the city last year. Does anybody know? Katrina, do you happen to have any idea? I'm just, how much?
$7,000.
$7,000? Well, I appreciate your willingness to not apply for money because of the perception of being conflicts of interest, but I would encourage you to maybe not think about that and maybe just not vote. and maybe just not vote on that particular item that you come forward because you do good work. And if we're going to preclude people from serving because they have a vested interest in something, we may not have a committee left. So I would encourage you to, to consider maybe not thinking along those lines because you do really good work with the money that we give you and, but that's just me. And I, again, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out for what it's worth, but I welcome you to the committee after we take this vote. So thank you for your service.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poses by the same sign, hearing done. The item passes. Okay, our next item is the unsolicited proposal. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Commissioners, on October 13th of this year, the city received an unsolicited proposal from 610 LLC, referred to as the Unsolicited Proposer, for the construction of a 292-space parking structure to be located at the northeast corner of Third Street Southwest and Avenue C Southwest in downtown Winter Haven. Section 255.065 of the Florida statutes, also referred to as the P3 statute, governs public-private partnerships in the process by which unsolicited proposals are received as a means by which public entities can deliver projects that serve a public benefit in a more time-efficient and cost-effective manner. A public parking structure is a qualifying project under the P3 statute. Concurrent with the submission of the unsolicited proposal, the applicant provided a $25,000 application fee as provided for in the statute to cover the city's costs associated with review of the proposal and subsequent construction plans, as well as associated construction, inspection services, and other related costs. The unsolicited proposal deal details the proposer's intent to design, construct, and deliver the completed parking structure to the city. The four-story parking structure is proposed to be constructed on properly, property currently owned by Urban Action LLC, of which the proposer is a 50% owner. The unsolicited proposer will demonstrate control of the real property by entering in, into a development agreement with Urban Action LLC. The P3 statute requires that at this meeting, this first duly public, or duly noticed public meeting, the proposal be presented to the city commission and that affected public entities and members of the public be given an opportunity to provide comments on the proposal for the city commission's consideration. In accordance with the P3 statute, at a second duly noticed public meeting, the city commission will be afforded the opportunity to make certain findings in order to determine that the proposal is in the public's interest. In making the public interest determination at that second meeting, the commission must consider the following factors as set forth in the P3 statute. The benefits to the public is number one. Number two, the financial structure of and the economic efficiencies achieved by the unsolicited proposal. Number three, the qualifications and experience of the unsolicited proposer that submitted the proposal and such entity's ability to perform the project. Number four, the project's compatibility with regional infrastructure plans. And number five, any public comments submitted at this evening's meeting. At that second duly noticed public meeting, city staff will prepare, in conjunction with the city attorney, an appropriate resolution for the commission's consideration and passage which will recite and contain the city commission's findings based on each of the aforementioned factors and constitute a report that includes the public interest determination and the factors considered in making such public interest determination. That report must then be published in the Florida Administrative Register for at least seven days. The register, that resolution will also authorize the city manager, if approved, to negotiate a comprehensive agreement with the unsolicited proposer. To assist with the review of the proposal, city staff solicited an independent third-party review from Walker Consultants, a firm familiar with Winter Haven parking demand and infrastructure pursuant to its completion of the Downtown Strategic Parking and Mobility Master Plan in July of 2022. On November 5th of this year, Walker Consultants delivered their independent analysis of the unsolicited proposal, making the following findings. One, the proposed construction cost of $23,224 per space based on construction alone is below both the 2025 national median of $31,400 per space and the Tampa region median of $27,224 per space. This cost is within acceptable market parameters for a turnkey, fixed-price, delivered parking structure. The proposed soft costs, engineering, architectural permitting, and the like, are 21% of the construction costs and are within acceptable market parameters of 15% to 25%. The proposed cost of $2 million for the land on which the garage will be constructed represents 20% of the overall project cost and when factored in with everything else increases the all-inclusive cost per space to $35,000. The proposed parking structure will occupy a portion of one parcel, leaving the parcel's existing building and some surface parking intact. Current Polk County appraised value for the entirety of the parcel is $3,319,331. Depending on whether the parcel is subdivided and to what extent, prior to being sold to the city, the cost is likely within acceptable market parameters for purchase. And finally, the proposed parking structure provides a public benefit by creating additional parking space supply in a rapidly developing downtown area with significant current and planned growth. Staff's review of the proposal, along with the Walker Consultant independent analysis of same, conclude that the proposal meets the requirements of the P3 statute and that the construction and delivery of the parking structure as proposed serves a public need and benefit, defines the financial structure and economic efficiencies to be achieved, describes the entity's qualifications and experience, and demonstrates compatibility with regional infrastructure plans. With the action this evening, which is to take public comment on that, there is, on this proposal, there is no direct financial impact to the city. However, should the commission, at your next meeting or when you hear this for your second noticed meeting, accept the unsolicited proposal and enter into a subsequent comprehensive agreement with the proposer, the total anticipated cost for delivery of the 292-space parking structure is $10,217,496. Staff recommends this evening, the city commission receive public comment with respect to the proposal and schedule a second duly noticed public meeting for December 8th, 2025 for further consideration as called for in the P3 statute. This evening, I understand the representatives from the unsolicited proposer are present. They do have a slide deck presentation, and I would recommend having them make that proposal to the commission at this point.
Okay. Well, there was a person that requested to speak.
Should I have the proposal first?
Pardon me.
Mr. Mayor, I think you should let the, the purpose of this meeting is for the unsolicited proposal to be presented to the commission and the public, and then for the city commission to entertain public comment.
But the consulting report, this is the same thing. Come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, city manager. We have presented, I think the city manager had done a good job of summarizing the proposal. The, Eric, did you have the, the deck that you wanted to present? Yeah, I think that, I think the commission's already received the, the proposal that we have submitted, and we will stand ready for any questions that you might have.
John?
Yes, sir.
I thought that, that the total purp, oh, you are going to show it?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea for you to present this.
Public's benefit?
For the public's benefit.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I, I'm, we're going to walk through it, and I'll walk through it quickly because I think the city manager is, is adequately described exactly what we are presenting. It's the, this, these are renderings of the, of the garage, and if we could, 292-space parking garage on the corner of Third and Avenue C, as was indicated. A lot of these are the compliance, our requirements, or it's chapter 255 of the Florida statutes, that we, you have to be very specific on what we are presenting and what we are, the terms of what we are offering to the city and that we have complied with the statute. We've, we're confident that we have completely complied with all the requirements of the statute. We can continue. Again, these are more compliance requirements of the statute, and, and as the city manager has indicated, we are proposing to design, develop, and construct the project. It's going to be a new four-story, 292-space, structured parking garage, a 96,000 square feet on the corner of Third Street and Avenue C. It'll be a turnkey basis presented to the city commission upon completed. We will, our efforts will include site development. If we can continue back.
Right.
We're going in the wrong direction here.
There you go.
Okay. Our efforts will include a comprehensive site development for our full architectural and engineering design, precast, concrete, and compliance with all applicable permitting and regulatory requirements, and it'll incorporate, it'll incorporate, obviously, compliance with all the municipal code requirements. Continue? We will be financing the project, using both the equity in the land and a construction loan, which we are already in negotiation on. And, but, but as we present it to the city, it will be free and clear when we, when we deliver it. Continue? This is the site, as it consisted, and, and to the left is north on the picture on the left, and the site will be on the, on the right, it'll be the, the southernmost part of this lot, and it'll be across from the street from where Grove Roots is right now, again, east of Third Street and north of Avenue C, and Rain Dances in the background there. Continue? These are more renderings of the site, and this is a, the red box indicates the location of the site on the overall parcel. Again, more renderings of the site. Let me go back one. One of the things that we have done, we think the first parking garage that the city constructed and developed, there was, it was purposeful to try to make it aesthetically pleasing and not look like just a more industrial-looking parking garage, and we have tried to design that into this as well. But obviously, the, we are willing, 610 is willing to work with the city with any comments that they might have in terms of revisions to the, the appearance of this, of the parking garage. If you can continue? Okay, right now, Urban Action, which is, we have representatives from Urban Action, and CEO of 610 is here as well tonight. Urban Action is the owner of the property. 610 is a partner with Urban Action, the partner in the property, and 610 will be entering into a development agreement with Urban Action in order to, to have Urban Action committed to transfer the property in accordance with a comprehensive agreement, which we will enter into with the city, assuming that this goes forward in two weeks. So the total construction, the total cost for the project, as indicated by the city manager, is $10,217,496. The, the, we, we, we've indicated in the application that we're going to do an 80% loan to construction financing, but that will be all within our financing when we sell it to the city, when deliver it to the city, and it'll be delivered free and clear. There's, there's the summary of the financials, as was indicated by the city manager that he just gave, and a per case, per cost base. Okay, let's just more continue discussing it. You continue to go. But Jason Fercas is our CFO. Again, upon, this is important, upon completion of the project, the idea is we will be building, delivering, and then transferring a completed project to the city so there, the city does not have the construction risks associated with the project. It will be completed and delivered free and clear at the time that it is completed. Obviously, available for more information. Continue? This is more of the statutory requirements. You can continue. Again, more of the statutory requirements. And then the, the public need and benefit, as the Walker study has indicated, which the Walker, I should clarify because there's been some discussion that Walker was, was that somehow worked for us. Walker did not work for us. Walker worked solely for the city of Winter Haven. They did the study three years ago as to the needs for parking, as the city manager has indicated, and then they did the study to review our proposal to make sure that they felt that it was, it was compliance with the statute. Again, I think that, that as the city manager indicated, and as the Walker study has indicated, the south, the south downtown area is in need for parking. As the, in the Walker study that was given three years ago, there was significant discussion about what different sites might be available for the city, and they had identified five total sites, four that were actually in the south portion of the city. And we'll, we'll continue, we'll talk about that. And that you can see those sites, number one, four, five, and eight, that were identified as being available, and the, no, site eight is, is presently grass lot. Site one is, is the Grand Central Project that's under redevelopment. Site four is slotted to be the developed as a, as an apartment complex, and so site, actually, the southernmost portion of site five that was identified by Walker is the site that we're utilizing for our project. Again, 292-space, four-story parking garage on the site identified in the Walker study and as, as reconfirmed by Walker in the recent review of our project. The, the, before they, before we enter into a comprehensive agreement occurs, and, and as indicated, the process is, assuming the city commission approves this to go forward in two weeks, then, then we, we have to negotiate with the city a comprehensive agreement, which will deal with the specific terms of how we're going to transfer the property and the condition of the property that when we transfer it, that is statutory, sorely required, and if there's very specifics in the statute as what you can do, that what needs to be in that agreement, and prior to doing that, we will enter an agreement with Urban Action, which is the owner of the property, so to, to make sure that it's, it's a seamless transfer at the time that the construction is completed on the project. We think that, obviously, parking is, is critical to the success of, of any city. The, the, you typically, in downtown areas, you, you try to develop your parking in advance of need, because by the time that you need parking, and you, you, you can have a difficulty or a possibility of getting the land that you need in order to build the facilities for parking that you want to have. So if you wait too long, most of the project, most of the parcels that have been identified are parcels that have, are targeted for redevelopment in different ways within the downtown, and eventually, there will not be parcels that you may want to have in order to redevelop in, for parking as you go forward, or to deal with your supply as you go. And the other thing that I, that was discussed in the Walker study and in ours, and I, we could continue to walk forward here, is, and continue, please, is that, is that at some point, you, the, the, at, there's a lot of surface parking that's private in the ci, in the downtown area right now. So there are people park, people using private parking lots for surface parking and not, it's not being charged for, and much of it is owned by either Urban Action or 610. As that property gets developed, those, those, those lots are going to go away. And so, so it's important, I think, to try to adjust for that for, assuming the city is desirous of building the downtown and developing the downtown. You, you would, you, you want to try to develop your parking now in order to support yourself into the future, or you could be in a bind as you go forward. Thank you. Continue. The cost has been indicated, and it's just, as you just heard from Walker Consultant, that they have evaluated, actually, our construction costs, they've evaluated to be $4,000 per space, less than the Tampa Bay average, and our, our, and $8,000 less space, less per space than the national average for construction of parking at this point. These are some comparatives that were in there, and, and it is hard to compare because sometimes if, if, if a project is, is, is very, very large, if you do a thousand, 1,100, one of these was an 1,100-space parking garage, you're obviously amortizing your cost of construction over your fixed costs and your land costs over more spaces, so your per-space cost goes down. But as you can see, I, I believe, and I think Walker found, that our total per-space cost was very, was very reasonable, and, and in fact, that's the analysis, that's the conclusion that they came to. Again, it, it, we feel it's a, it's a 10-month project, I think three months for design and, and bid process, once we enter into the comprehensive agreement, which we would anticipate, after, assuming that you approve this- which we would anticipate, after, assuming that you approve this in two weeks, then it has to go through another step of another evaluation by independent consultants by, of the city, that the city would, it would enter an agreement with. And then, and after that is done, then the city will then have to approve an execution of a comprehensive agreement, which we would anticipate being in late January or February. And, and it would be, from that point forward, it would be a three-month period of time to, to do the, the design and the bidding, the process, and then, and then seven months for the construction. You can continue. So obviously, Six Ten is identified as the developer of the project. We do not own the site. We are partners with the folks that own the site, and, but we would be the lead developer on the project. Whitehead Construction would be the contractor for the project. I think they're very well-known. Their experience is identified here. Continue. Metromont is a precast contractor that does lots and lots of these construction projects around, around the country, and they're a very capable group, and their qualifications are identified there. Obviously, CNK Architects is locally, local, and well-known by all of you, and designed the first parking garage that you developed. We believe it's compatible with the regional infrastructure plan and the plan as articulated by, by the Walker, Walker study in 2022. And to our knowledge, since in that three-year period, since they did, since they completed their study, and said that there was a need for parking in south, in the south central, south downtown area, I believe we're the only ones that have come forward in that three-year period to try to fill that need for the city. Public comments, obviously, that's today. I think this is more statutory requirements. Again, more statutory requirements. And this will be in the agreement. So in summary, I believe that what Six Ten is trying to do is respond to a need of the city for parking in the south central core of the city, as identified by the city's consultant three years ago, and to try to put together a turnkey project that you will be able to satisfy that need on property that is, that is presently available for a 292 parking space at a price that your consultant has said is reasonable and, and, and with respect to the construction costs themselves, is actually significantly below both the Tampa Bay average and the, so, thank you for your attention. Again, we have representatives from both Six Ten and from Urban Action here, if you have any questions, Mr. City Manager.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the...
So at this time, Mr. Mayor, if you don't have any questions of the proposal based upon the presentation that Mr. Baker just made, be appropriate to open it up for comment from the members of the public that wish to entertain that. We will take note of those and inscribe those, so that when we come back in two weeks, those questions, whether there are questions or comments, that we can provide clarity on that to the commission.
Okay. First person is Beth Kuhn. Would you please come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. I'm Beth Kuhn-Speewak. I reside at 123 Pino Poco in Winter Haven, Florida. I am a proud Winter Haven native, proud graduate of City U Class III, and, and very supportive of a lot of businesses that are going to speak to you tonight. I read the Walker report. I didn't realize until today it was three years old, but it addresses a lot of the parking concerns in Winter Haven, including the proposed garage, which we're speaking to tonight. I did see one fatal flaw in the analysis of the Walker report. It's missing a key stakeholder group in these plans, and that is of the mobility impaired. And the Walker report, as you recall, talks in terms of walkability of any parking area in the city of 400 feet, 800 feet, 1,200, 1,600 feet in groups of A, B, C, or D. My husband, who's had several back surgeries, is restricted to A-distance parking, 400 feet or less. So, for example, should you approve this garage to be built, he could ambulate to Grove Roots, Beryl, Lucille's. He would not be able to lay ambulate, as the Walker report suggests, to Bowen Yard, which is two city blocks away. We have the same problem now with parking downtown. If we want to do Nitro Bingo Thursday night at the Ritz, not this week, we park in the garage, but if we want to go to dinner, then the Ritz, and a drink afterwards, we can't do that. We have deprived two businesses of our business for that event, simply because it's far enough to walk from the garage, down the alley, in the back door of the Ritz, up the back ramp. That's all my husband can do. So businesses are being denied access from the mobility impaired. The good news is, I've understood from talking with the city manager and with the CRA staff, that a golf cart-type service, shuttle service will be implemented for downtown. And it's similar to the Squeeze in Lakeland and Lake Wells in Bartow, which could span possibly from Central Avenue to Highway 17, and between the two Avenue Ds to cover that core downtown business area. I want to thank the city for their support and their pursuit of that. So in summary, the goal is so that we can patronize local businesses, so that we can serve the members of our community who are moving into these beautiful new apartment complexes, but please also consider, take into consideration those folks who can't do the walkability part of the equation. I want to thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Scoobna. I have a business at 103rd Street Southwest. You have to excuse me, this never gets easier speaking up here. I am not speaking for or against this project. I just simply have some questions and concerns, and the first one is, why are we moving so quickly on this? That, the parking study that we keep referring to, that was done in 2022, took, how long would you say that took, T. Michael? At least a year, maybe two years?
I'd have to defer to staff on that.
It took quite some time. We had several meetings, public meetings, and so why is this not getting the same consideration? To give people time to ask their questions and figure, figure things out, and maybe at the end of that, this is the, this is the right spot. But $10 million is a huge investment for the city to make, and I am curious, is that coming out of the general fund? What is, where is that coming from?
So there is money specifically earmarked for a parking structure, and there are savings on other projects associated with transportation improvements that we've realized over the past year, Logistics Parkway probably being the largest of those. So this is within the transportation infrastructure. That is a separate construction fund, not general fund.
Okay. Well, I will say, originally, when the whole public-private partnership was brought, brought to the committee and brought to the CRA, and kind of discussed through that parking study that was done, which, by the way, city manager Mike Hirsch stood right here after that study was done, and looked at all of you, and said that he did not recommend a public-private partnership. And that was, I believe, that was at $5 million. So now we're at 10, and we're going to rush it through in two weeks. You're not giving anyone any time to even weigh in on it. And that's not fair to the people that use the parking or the businesses that, that rely on the parking. And like it was stated, there were several different places that were talked about, and I understand that they didn't come up here and solicit a, a proposal to you, but perhaps that's because they didn't know that there was $10 million out there to put a garage somewhere. I, personally, I believe the Andy Thornells lot would be a great place for additional parking. I spoke to them today, and they would be willing to discuss it with you. I think it's central for everyone. I do agree that we need more parking. I do agree that the businesses in that area also need parking, but there's questions, like where are those people that use that parking lot currently in that construction period of time? Where are they going to park? Are they going to get any relief? Because we see what happened on Central, is, are we going to repeat that? Or are we going to slow down and try to make it sustainable for everyone? It's not fair for people to be collateral damage, if you will, because that's what's going to happen. You are going to lose some business. We're losing businesses left and right. It is hard to run a business right now. So adding, adding any stress to them is going to, it's going to be tough. So that's why I think we need to slow down and have more discussion on this before we come to a conclusion on it. Two weeks is too fast. I would have never known, had I not sat on a committee that got an email about this, I wouldn't have known. This is my busy time of year. I'm not looking at the agenda every day, because I, it's just my busy time of year. Had I not got that email, I wouldn't even know this is going on, which I guarantee is the same for most people. They don't know, Andy Thornells had no idea this was going on. They're going to be affected by it. Everyone's going to be affected by this. I'm just asking that you slow the process down, have some more meetings, and, and I think personally, there was a lot of flaws in, in the consultant group's parking study. And I raised a lot of questions, and to, quite frankly, I never got the answers. As a matter of fact, I thought that we budgeted more money to continue that, that study, and I don't think, has that ever come to conclusion?
The Walker study is concluded.
Right, but then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The Walker study was concluded. There was no more work to be done on the Walker study. We budgeted funds to implement some of the things that were in the study, such as the wayfinding, master plan, and stuff like that.
I thought there was...
Microtransit was another piece that came out of that for which funds are budgeted.
So was that, was that done, that study? The rest of the study?
There was no more study to be done. There was the, the recommendations that they had submitted at that time. We've done additional design work on wayfinding for downtown, and we've done, we implemented through CRA and through the general fund, funds to do the microtransit.
Can I extend my time through another business?
Yes.
Okay. Jessie Scoobna, 118 Third Street Southwest. So it was my understanding, because this was brought to the CRA committee that I sit on, it was my understanding, which I know that you approved the, the study, but it was my, there was a lot of questions that was not in the study, and they were, and I was told that you weren't, you weren't asked to, or they weren't asked to come up with these answers as far as how many businesses and how many parking spaces were needed in each zone. Because originally, they said that parking lot across from us, I guess that would be Third and Avenue A, was not used. And they were ready, and they recommended that it was okay to sell that. And as a matter of fact, you were going to sell it. Do you recall what you were going to sell that lot for?
I don't know, recall the dollar value, no.
I think it was in the 200,000 range. Is it fair to say that?
I can't say if that's fair or not fair.
Around 20 spaces, you were going to sell that for, for 200, approximately 200,000, but yet you're going to buy a 51-space lot for $2 million. And these are the, these are the questions that the taxpayers in the business community have, and we feel it's appropriate to have time to ask these questions and get these answers before you move forward. And again, I'm not asking you not to move forward with this, I'm just asking to give it a little more time. Two weeks, I, all I hear is government takes a long time. Well, this isn't long, this is your, I mean, it's the holidays. Who, who even has time to come to this meeting? I know a lot of people that wanted to come that are out of town. So what are you going to do with that? Are you just going to pretend that's not happening? And then I guess I want to address something, because I am probably the one that put out there that Walker consultant is working for Six Ten. And I am curious, so who paid for the study that they just did? Or the...
So the city pays for that study? The fee that is charged with the application, the $25,000, is to help offset costs associated with those reviews? That's a fee that we establish. And then we reached out to Walker, is the expert on that, who did the original traffic or parking study for us, to review that proposal.
So between October 13th and November, whatever, they were able to do that independent study that quickly? Interesting, because it took them a long time. They drug out that parking study. It seems like these studies are done for development and not for actual parking for the businesses. I just, I'm afraid that you're already having a hard time getting people to park in the garage that we currently have, so maybe you need to look at more surface parking. Maybe taking that $10 million and spreading it out to several different zones would be more appropriate for the businesses and for the tax dollars. And then you have to ask yourself, why did Mike Hirsch say that he did not recommend it? Because he certainly stood right here and said he did not recommend that public-private partnership. So all I'm asking is that you give it a little more time and give everyone time to weigh in on it. $10 million is a lot of money, and it's the tax money. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Everybody, my name is Steve Calagritis, and I'm here representing Silver Properties of Winter Haven LLC. So I'm not going to address, I want to, I want you to go to the first picture, this picture, aerial. So we'll give you a little history from our perspective. Silver Properties is a, is a group of investors, 60, that, there's another one, it's an aerial picture I sent you. There's been four total. That one, right there. Silver Properties is a group of 60 investors that have made a large capital investment in downtown Winter Haven. If you look at this map, which is an aerial of it, because I'm not here to debate Jessie's points or anything like that, I'm here to just give you some hard, cold facts about some things I think need to be considered. If you look at the two apartment complexes you see on the horizon, Rain Dance and Breeze, we're by far the largest investor in those two projects. If you look at the 2002nd Building, we own 50% of that with Six Ten. When we bought this property, it's our partners and us, when we owned the BB&amp;T parcel, we also, and along that way, when we got ready to develop it, and we said, you know, we really aren't in a position to really know much about commercial, so I reached out to Bud and said, Six Ten willing to be a partner with us and Urban Action, which is where that whole thing came from. Now, having said that, we never bought any of these properties with the intent that we were going to let farmers' markets use them, or that people would just park on them free forever. We've done that for about three or four years now, and, and we can't continue to do that. So one of the things, I want, you can go onto the next slide if you would, which shows the parcel. So we've moved forward. Next one. Okay, and so you need to know some of the things we're looking at. There's one more than the one you first, there you go. This is, this is a real-time picture of where we are. We've already spent over $200,000 on architecture. If you see the blue part in the front, now my concern was that a lot of this stuff wasn't getting out, so I personally took the time to go sit down and talk to Joe and to Paul, and I think Paul's here, and Miguel, let other people know where we really stood on this whole thing. Because at the end of the day is, none of this property in six months will be available for parking. Because we, we can't afford to pay the millions of dollars we did instead of sit there. So we're going to develop this property, and we've moved forward with it. The picture of the carl, can you put that up on there? This is the project that's going to be on the, on the tip, across from Carl, and Paul didn't even know that, but so I felt compelled and ethically spent time with these people. So that complex is going on the front. The parking lot, it, you know, we, we never intended to put a parking garage there. Bud came to us and, and asked us to work with him on that, and we support that, because we support what Six Ten does. But at the end of the day, make no mistake about it, that property's not going to sit vacant. And it won't be available for Joe to park in, Paul to park in, or Maritome to park in. Because we can't, we're not in the business to pay for property just for everybody to use. So it's essentially, what I want to make sure we understand is, I am concerned about Joe Dunham. I am concerned about Paul Nunez, you know, because those businesses work hard and are viable, and without parking, I don't know how they exist. But we, we aren't in the private sector, I mean, the public sector business, we're in the private sector business. We have investors, and they, they are experiencing and counting on us doing other things. There's another parcel in the Hewitt. So if you look at this piece, this is the Hewitt parcel that we own, Six Ten. Paul uses it now for a lot of his employees to park on. I can't promise him that when we get through developing that... I can't promise him that when we get through developing that, there'll be any parking available for his employees. So when you look at the businesses around this, keep in mind that, you know, something needs to give here, because starting in a few months from now, two or three, there won't be any parking available BB&amp;T. We, Chris is moving out now, because we're not in the business to host farmers markets. We're in the business to develop property. And so I think that needs to be concerned. My concern is what happens to these surrounding businesses if we don't go forward with the parking garage? Now, maybe there's another option you have, and, and that's okay. Because that's, that's, I don't carry that banner. But I do carry, and what everyone to know is that we're moving forward with our projects. And the idea of waiting, well, it, it costs money to wait. You know, we have interest payments. We have tax payments, we have insurance payments. So we're not going to sit around and, and wait for everybody to ponder these things. And my five minutes is up. But anyhow, thank, no, I just, I'm, I'm here to answer questions. But I, but I think people need to understand that these properties are owned by private investors with private agendas. And, and, and we're going to end up, if we're not careful, with a bunch of businesses downtown. I mean, I think Joe Dunham has 50 parking, 55 parking places. And so I don't know where he's going to park his people. And I'll let Paul speak to that, his own, I don't represent Paul in this matter. But I am concerned, I am concerned about where these businesses are going to park. So, okay, thanks for your time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
How are you guys? Paul Nunez, I own Lucille's American Cafe downtown. One of the things that, when we considered putting the restaurant in there about four or five years ago, that I was concerned with was the downtown parking. And how the downtown was going to be developed for parking. And four years later, I feel exactly the same as I did four years ago. Because I feel slightly different than Jesse does, where I feel like we're not moving fast enough. I feel like we keep kicking the can down the road. I see development, 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 development without parking. Apparently downtown zone to where developers allowed to build without considering parking. So then it becomes a city problem. And invariably, I think what everybody's realizing, it really ends up becoming business owners' problems if you don't have parking for your staff and for your customers. So luckily, 610 is allowing me to use that parking lot that they own for my employees. That takes up anywhere from minimum of 15 to sometimes up to 30 parking spaces per shift. So that would be lunch or dinner. And then with the seating that I have, the customer parking usually ends up being anywhere from 100 to 120 parking spaces is used by my business daily, lunch, dinner, during bowling periods. Definitely Saturday and Sunday during brunch. Definitely Friday and Saturday night. The weeknights aren't as tough as we know. The total parking that I have allocated to my business is actually zero. Other than 610 allowing my employees to park there, everybody parks there. It's just street parking. When I saw this proposal for the parking garage, I actually got a little excited. It's within a couple of blocks of my business. I wish it was a little bit closer. I think that's, but I think it's a good spot. That side of downtown is quickly, quickly, quickly running out of parking. When I first opened, there was plenty of parking over there, because half those businesses didn't even exist. And here we are four years later, and I just see all these leases being assigned. Everybody's moving in, and the parking is quickly disappearing on my side of downtown. It's actually the number one comment I get from customers is parking. The, a lot of my negative reviews, like on Yelp or TripAdvisor, is like, goes back to parking, you know, which I don't feel like I have control over. The other concern that I have, which also echoes exactly what she was saying, is, you know, ADA is really a national law. It's not like for any city or county or state to decide, oh, we're going to build it ADA accessible or not. It is a national thing. I don't feel like there's enough guidance on that, I would say, to be nice, in this city, and moving forward on that. And I think that it's a huge issue. We, I have a lot of handicapped customers that come in. I put in handicap doorways, try to make sure the doors don't close that fast. But they still really struggle sometimes, just getting down the street, getting down the sidewalk, getting to the business, as much as I've done to make it accessible. So I think that with this project, or with any project like that, I really think that, you know, taking into account, you know, ADA, you know, accessibility, people that can't get through, you know, smaller doorways and, you know, crossings at the intersections is hugely important. And, and hopefully we'll consider that. And as in regard to the property for Thorn Hall, I actually agree with Jesse. But I, I think you should do it all. Like, I think you should do the parking garage. I think you need Thorn Halls for surface level parking. There is no parking, as you guys know, for Adler's and for Honeycomb. And then with the school there, that is just a mess back there. And there's cars parking everywhere. So I think there's a need specifically there. And there's a need specifically on the side of downtown where we're proposing this garage. And again, you know, you got to keep in mind that restaurants take a lot of parking, more than people realize. You know, I'm giving you the example of about 120 spaces, you know, at any given time. That's a real number, you know? And when you look at, you know, I've got maybe 10 or 15 parking spaces on the street in front of my business, I mean, it's just not enough. Luckily downtown does have some mixed things happening during the daytime. A lot of business people, the parking is taken up. They all leave at night. The nighttime people come in. So I do see a lot of that, like turnover of the parking, which is, which is nice and which is healthy. And I think that this structure will continue on that. So I do support any money that the city spends on any amount of parking that can be added to downtown. Because I think that that really is a concern for the businesses to have adequate parking for their customers to patronize. If people come downtown, and every time they come, it's just a hassle to park, and they can never find parking, they never know what to do, they're just going to stop coming. You know, I go to Lakeland, I take a couple laps around looking for street parking. If it's not there, I hit the garage and I go. And I think that, you know, pretty much everyone's going to pretty much do that. So I do think that this garage is going to be well-used and is in a great location.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mike Lee. I, I own the Laugh Out Lounge at 19 Third Street Southwest in Winter Haven. I, I kind of want to echo what he's saying. 100%, we need a parking garage. We need more parking downtown. My big, and I'll try to keep this very brief, but my biggest concern is, so 610 sells the land at a discount, they build the, the parking garage at a discount, and it becomes city-owned, correct? Winter Haven owns it, I assume you maintain it? So that would be yours. My biggest concern is, what guarantees are there that it will maintain being public? That it will stay a public parking garage? Because a lot of these places, like in Lakeland you go to, there'll be apartment complex, and they just stopped through talking about another apartment complex going in on that same parcel at the tip. There are parking, parking garages in Lakeland where a parking or apartment complex will literally lease an entire floor. So that completely, you know, takes away from the amount. So now your $292 is down to $192 of public parking. Or also the shared office spaces that 610 runs. Amazing place, and I love 610, so please, don't think I'm talking bad about you guys. I love the, I love their business. But, but also, I don't want to see them go, well, we have these shared office spaces, we kind of cut a deal for you guys, do you mind if we lease out the bottom floor from nine to five every day? So just like this parking garage that already exists, we can't park in there from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM every day. So that cuts back parking during the day for the boutiques and other businesses that are open during the day. So that would be my main concern about the whole thing, is just, let's make some guarantees in there that it maintains that it stays public parking. It doesn't get leased privately from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, or overnight for resident parking, things like that. That's my only concern, and I hope you guys would also take that into consideration. Thank you.
Next, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carl Coling. I have a business on 64th Street Northwest. I've operated my business there for 33 years. I have been parking in the present parking garage since its very beginning in 2012. I personally like it, but not everybody feels that way. I would say on any given day, the occupancy rate of the parking garage is about 35%. I know that because I calculated it. The bottom floor is usually full, the very top floor is empty, and the floor in between is sparse. Now, this is what I hear from my customers, because I hear complaints about parking. I say, well, have you considered the parking garage? And say, well, I'm not going to park there. I say, well, why? Why don't you want to park there? It's so close. It's dark inside. They don't feel safe. And I've always had one to two employees who will not park there. Now, they're not allowed to park in front of my store, or else they would be fired. You know, you can't take away custom, parking from the customers. So they park in 24-hour parking somewhere else down the street. But they will not, like many of my customers, they will not park in that garage because it's dark. Now, I don't know if you need a new parking garage or not. I have no idea. Except you got to be very careful about the design, because if it's dark inside, they're not going to want to park there. Young people, probably. But you got to keep in mind, so many of the customers down here are boomers. They're old. I'm one of the oldest boomers out there. I was born in 1946. I can still walk, talk, and chew gum. But, you know, the boomers have half of the wealth of this country, 14 to 16 trillion dollars. My business caters to that age. I, we really do. I have things for everybody, but my customers are over 60 mostly. I have a baby department that does very well. It's not young people buying the things in the baby department. It's the boomers, it's the grandmas, the first grandchild, et cetera, et cetera. So you really, I don't, like I said, I don't know if you need another second garage or not. I know the first one does not work. And I've been parking there since the very beginning. And you can't help but notice, like, on any given day, if you look at the electronic sign above the garage, it's going to say 200-plus spaces available. So that tells you something. The garage, you know, had, I mean, there's a lot of spaces in there, and there, there's so many of them empty. I don't know how to put people in there. I really don't. I mean, when you think about when the parking was eliminated on Central, where did those people go? Well, they're not in the parking garage. I can tell you that much. So I would really look at the design very carefully. And like I said, I don't know if you need one or not. But if it's going to be similar to the situation over here, I mean, you're not getting, you're not getting the mileage for the money out of that parking garage. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Bud Strang, I'm CEO for 610, 1733 East Lake Cannon Drive. Just want to make a couple of points. Parking is tough. But I listened all, this is great news. 15, 20 years ago, there was no parking problem in downtown Winter Haven. You could park anywhere you wanted practically all day for free, because no one was coming downtown. And it is a, it's a problem that all, all downtowns that are growing and expanding deal with. There's no easy answer, there's no cheap answer to solve the problem. But it's a, you know, I salute the commission and, and Mike Herr back in '22, when they engaged the, the Walker folks for doing this, like, because they knew this was going to come. And the Walker report, which we did not, we did not engage them, I thought was very well-done. And they've, they came highly recommended, and they do this kind of work all over the state. So I think this isn't something that we're not rushing into. This started four years ago. The commission and Mike Herr at the time had the foresight to go ahead and start, they made the down payment for this next parking garage. Four and a half million dollars, I believe, was set aside at that time. So I, I take a little bit of, like I said, I don't think this is being rushed into. The second thing I just want to point out is, this is economic development, is that the way a downtown grows is you've got to bring more people down there, whether it's people living down there, working down there, or visiting a hotel, for, for example. That's what will, that's what I think helps make the smaller businesses work. It's bringing people in and moving them around. Lakeland, our, our sister city, has four parking garages. They're only a little over twice the size of Winter Haven. They have four, they're working on the fifth one. And, and look what's happening. The public's employees are moving down there. The, I forget, the big insurance company that's moving down there. And we have those kind of opportunities as well. But you can't, you can't just snap your fingers and build a parking structure. This is something that takes a lot of time to do. So I salute you guys for considering this and looking at it. It's a, it's a real important decision for the city. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Carissa Hughes, and I own a business at 68 Fourth Street Northwest. And first and foremost, let me just say thank you. Thank you for your investment. Thank you for 610. Thank you. We appreciate the development, the big picture. As a small business owner, what my intent here is today is to bring you my, what affects me as a small business owner, what affects, you know, we're talking about building the business, but it's my business that is directly affected. If my business leaves, you no longer have my small business. If we don't support the small businesses and think about what affects those businesses, and we're only thinking about these big pictures right now, where all these big things, are we really thinking about what affects your small businesses? Think about this, guys. Last year, when we took away all that parking on Central Avenue, and don't, it's beautiful. I love it, it's gorgeous. We had so many complaints. People that want the ease, they want access, they want to be able to pull in front of the businesses they want to go to, and go in and get what they want and come out. And I realize the mindset is that we want this walkability, I, I get that. But again, just like Carl said, let's think about our demographics here for a second. Okay? And I realize that we want to expand that. We want to think about the future. We want to think about moving people into those apartments. I, I get it. But let's take a minute and understand that seven businesses closed last year. Were those businesses compensated in any way? No, they're gone. So now we're just going to look for other businesses to just bring in. If you don't have those small businesses in those, in, in the four blocks, there's nothing for those people to do. There's nothing. So keep in mind, I, I don't necessarily think that the parking garage is a bad idea. I, I don't. I think that you just have to be mindful of what it affects and how it is affected. Are there going to be streets shut down? Are there going to be more businesses affected? What does that growth, what does that look like? So that's, that's my intent. Bring awareness from a small business owner's perspective, and how decisions that you make affect us, affect our lives. I literally, I moved down here 10 years ago. And every, I've been in business for 15 years. And every single year I've been in business, my sales have exceeded the year before, except the last two years. The last two years. I took a 10-year setback. And I know that we've had difficulties, I know economically we're, you know, going through struggles, but the parking just about killed us. It just about killed us. We're here by the grace of God. So that's, I, I do appreciate you, and I appreciate all that you do, and I am grateful for all the development, I am grateful for the growth. But I just wanted to keep, just bring back awareness to you from our perspective. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, Mike Hill, 3206 East Lake Cartridge Drive, Winter Haven. I'm one of the investors of 610 and Silver. I've lived in Winter Haven area since I was nine years old. And I am super excited to see what the city's done, the growth. I was one of the people that pushed back on the parking garage in the very beginning. But I can tell you, I know a lot of the small business owners, the whole thing we're doing this for is to make sure they can get people in. I'd come downtown three or four nights a week. I eat lunch in Winter Haven, I eat dinner in Winter Haven, we go out for cocktails in Winter Haven. I eat at Lucille's every week. I support the local people, my wife supports. I support the local people. My wife supports it. Our friends support it. But I can tell you, it's getting harder and harder to find parking spaces. And my concern is exactly what you just said. People aren't gonna come to your business if we have nowhere to park. So do I think maybe we could have some other areas, like around Amy Thornell's, and some surface parking? Maybe that's something we look for. But I don't think these businesses are gonna make it if we don't give people places to park. And I know, like I said, I pushed back really hard on that parking garage. But I also understand what these people need for their economic development. So please consider that. Thank you very much for what you do.
Anyone else?
I will make it short and sweet. I just wanna clarify, I am not against this parking garage. I am against how quickly it is going through, and things aren't able to be addressed. Like, how many of those spaces are going to be able to be leased out to different businesses? Because I believe your current ordinance allows for quite a bit of it to be leased out.
Current ordinance limits parking leases to 10% of the available inventory.
I believe you changed that. Did you not change that ordinance for the parking structure?
Is what is on our current ordinance.
So then when you were gonna lease out the entire top floor of the current garage, how was that gonna work?
You buy a development agreement that would have to be approved by the CRA board at that time, the city commission. That's the group that has the final say on that. The ordinance, as it's written today, is for 10%. And there is nothing within this proposal that calls for any leaseback of any spaces.
Currently, but we all know how it goes once something gets moving. So, and that's, and that's my point. I feel like all of these things should just be addressed before you get into an agreement. And again, I'm not here opposing this parking garage, because I do believe that side of town needs parking. I do believe those businesses deserve parking. I have been downtown for 23, my business has been in the same location for 23-plus years. And I have to beg to differ. 15 years ago, I was having a parking problem. There, our businesses bring a ton of parking down there as well, and there's always been a parking problem since I've been in business. I, I actually see recently, it seems like more of a ghost town than it's ever been the entire time I've been down here. So I just feel like it just needs a little more time. And again, I am not here to oppose it. I'm just asking that you give some time for some of these questions and concerns to be addressed before you vote this through in two weeks. So thank you for giving me the time, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Miguel Barcello, 302 Fourth Street Maritime, one of the owners there.
Miguel, can you pronounce your last name again, please?
Barcello.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm new to all of this, so we're a new business here in Winter Haven. Not new to Winter Haven, grew up here, from here. But I have a lot of questions. So with regard to what, you know, Jesse was saying here, also, you know, very much in favor of the parking garage, because we need the parking for sure. Just wanted to be clear about that. But I think that some of the concerns are that there's a lack of transparency. And I don't mean that in a negative way, as if you're trying to hide anything. But for people like me who are new to the process, it's not clear how we figure out where the money's coming from or what the plans are tactically in terms of, sure, the parking garage is supposed to support business, but how exactly are we planning to do that? And what I mean with that question is, for example, my business is going to be further south than the parking garage is planned for, but nobody walks in that direction. There's no reason to walk in that direction if you don't know that the Bowen yard is there. And a year and a half into our existence, people are still coming to the restaurant for the first time and saying, we didn't even know this yard was here. So we're looking for support from the city, and are we gonna get that in terms of signage that will specifically point people in our direction? Or like someone had mentioned before, you know, golf carts or some kind of valet parking that will get people down to us? And furthermore, going back to the transparency thing, how do we get information from the city regarding what the plans are moving forward for future projects? You know, those kinds of things, if we could just have that in writing or some forum in which we could present these questions so that all of us, you know, that are interested can, you know, get together, whether it be online or in meetings like this, where we can say, hey, we have all of these questions. We submit them, and then we get a timeframe where someone says, hey, you know, on this webpage or through this vehicle, we're gonna give you some answers in, in writing, where we have, hey, your question was this on this date. Here's our specific answer to that. And the feedback is, did that answer your question? So those are my concerns, just as someone who's new, new to all of this and, you know, experiencing this for the first time. It just seems that, you know, some questions are not able to be answered just because the forum of just getting up here, asking a question that isn't necessarily able to be answered today at this time, or where it's available to everybody else in the community, makes it difficult for the discourse to be useful, where people feel like they're being heard and having their questions answered. So to quit beating a dead horse, is there something in place where people can ask their questions and have an actual specific answer given, you know, by the city or the contractors involved?
Certainly, you're able to reach out to my office, to Mr. Labby. We'll be happy to sit down and share with you whatever information it is you're looking for. It's kind of hard to put that out without knowing specifically what your, your individual questions are, but...
Right. So that's, that's my point, is that I, there, what is, is there not a vehicle set up where we can actually, in writing, where everybody can see what our questions are, and we can collaborate, you know, extend those questions?
And then everybody can... I don't know that there's a vehicle for that, other than the public meetings that we do, city commission meetings for that purpose, for them to receive comments from the public. But as far as, you know, this proposal, certainly give you a copy of it, that you have the same thing that we have. As far as this is what's submitted, here's what the Walker analysis says to it, here's our, our fact sheet that goes with it. And be, for anybody, for that matter, myself and our planning staff, happy to sit down and go through that.
Sure. Well, I would, I would ask and even recommend that we do establish a vehicle, whether it be an online forum or something, where we can actually see, hey, these questions were asked on this date, and here's the answer to those questions. And that way, everybody has a transcript of, you know, specifically what was asked, and they get an actual, you know, very specific in-writing answer to those things. You know, those concerns, I know that Jesse had asked about, you know, budgetary things like, hey, where is that money coming from? And you did answer, but it would be nice if that was in, in writing, so that people can actually see, and we can disseminate, you know, whether it be through Facebook or whatever other vehicle, because, you know, a guy like me, I, it's my first time ever coming to one of these, and even though I've come here, it's a lot of information. To try to remember all of that without, you know, having my own personal stenographer, you know, it's gonna be hard to relay all the information I've gotten to, you know, my friends and my business partners, so...
Well, and for the benefit, Mr. Barcello, and for you and everybody else, everything that we had, we've presented this evening is available online through the agenda packet. So certainly, that's, and that's published for every commission meeting. In addition to reaching out to me and my staff, certainly encourage you to reach out. You have five elected officials that will be happy to meet with you at the same time. Not them at the same time, but individually to answer questions and hear concerns. And that's, that's really what their role is, is the elected body.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? No one else? All right. We just, I don't, we'll come back in...
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, certainly we've taken note of questions asked this evening. You'll meet again on December 8th. We'll bring those questions back, provide answers to the specific questions, and at that point, you'll have an opportunity to decide how you wanna proceed. And again, anything that would be specific to a comprehensive agreement to advance the project, if deemed appropriate by the commission, that would come back. I would anticipate no sooner than the end of January, your second meeting in January. More realistically, probably early February 2026, for your consideration at that time.
All right. Okay. All right. Any questions? Any more comments? All right, we're gonna move on. Commissioner Leeson reports. Commissioner Dantzler.
Okay. Kind of a sparse couple of weeks for me. Wine, chocolate, and cheese. One of my favorite events that the city puts on, or that Main Street puts on, very well attended, good time there. Opening of Lake Albert Trail. That's been something that's been talked about for over 40 years, as we talked about at the grand opening. So glad to see that finally become a reality. That's gonna be one of those projects, iconic projects, that's gonna, that's gonna be used by the residents of this community for well over 50 years, so. Also attended the Winter Haven Police Department Thanksgiving luncheon. Finally got a piece of that peanut butter pie I keep hearing about, so that was delicious. Whoever makes that has, gets my compliments. State of the City, T. Michael, you did a great job. Staff was there in force, supporting you, and made the city commission look good, so thank you for the state of the city. And then last but not least, I attended the Hartford Winter Haven banquet. And I've been to a lot of banquets for Hartford Winter Haven and others through the years, and that was one of the best ones. That was just top-notch from top, from, from beginning to end. So they did a good job with that banquet, so. And that's it for me.
All right. Commissioner Dolison.
Good evening. Very informative meeting tonight, in interest of time. I just made my, you know, comments. I did attend the Lake Albert Trail, which is really phenomenal. And I encourage anyone ever want to take the opportunity to utilize that. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Mayor Pro Cam Yates.
Thank you. Just a couple, couple items this evening I wanted to bring attention to. Number one, yes, the state of the city was, was phenomenal. Countless people came up and said, where did you get that guy, T. Michael? I'm like, oh my gosh. Didn't wanna, want his head to quite explode, but he did.
If the guy from Laugh Out Loud, Loud, he's here, he could probably get you somebody better.
He, I, I will say, I, I agree, he did a phenomenal, phenomenal job. And we are lucky as a, as a city to have a city manager as T. Michael. He's just very articulate, way more than I ever could be, to really get the message out there. And that's where, again, that gentleman that just spoke, you know, I mean, it's coming to things like that and just being involved. That's, that's really what it comes down to. It's coming to commission meetings, it's attending cities, states of, states of the city events. All those kind of things just add up and make you a more well-informed citizen. Attending City U is another one, you know, I mean, just becoming a more well-informed citizen. It, it, it's, it's on their part as well. And I, I just, I'm glad that we, as a city, continue to make those things available to our citizens. Also attended the Hartford Winter Haven event. That was a great event. I mean, that, that was packed. That was, I think, 54 tables, and I didn't see very many empty seats. That was a phenomenal event for them. And then finally, I'll just say, the Lake Albert Trail, wow. I was a little bit frustrated because of some of the things that I saw after the event out there on social media. And, you know, it's like, gosh, I know better than to look at social media by now after six years of doing this, but it, still wanna get what the pulse is out there. And I'll just say, the Lake Albert Trail was not a pet project for anyone. It was a legacy project for the city of Winter Haven. I am 43 years old. I think about that for a second. I grew up on Lake Albert. I walked home from school from Albert Elementary to, to, to home and walked through everybody's yards and got yelled at most, more often than not, from the baby boomers of that time. Get out of my yard. I'm like, I'm not supposed to walk in the street. Where am I supposed to walk? But, you know, that's something that, that students no longer have to worry about. They can, they can walk around that trail to get from point A to point B. Exercising in the community, I mean, I need to go walk that trail more often now. Just to, it, it's just, it's a healthy project for the health of, of Winter Haven, and I couldn't be more proud of it. Wasn't my project. It wasn't Commissioner Dantzler's or anybody else's up here. That was a generational legacy project that, that occurred, and I couldn't be more proud of it. I wanted to address one accusation that I saw out there, and I'm like, I saw it, and I'm like, that, I just don't even, that's not accurate. I don't remember anything ever seeing this, but that's eminent domain. We have, to my knowledge, there was no eminent domain utilized for the Lake Albert Trail project. Every single landowner there either donated the land or was compensated for their land. And quite frankly, their homes are probably more valuable now because that trail exists. So I just wanted to clarify that accusation, to get the facts straight on that. And again, certainly not since I've been on this commission have we ever enacted eminent domain on a, on a, on a piece of property, and that's not anything I would ever support. Can you clarify that? Can you, city manager?
So there was no eminent domain involved in any way, shape, or form on the Lake Albert Trail. We use a voluntary acquisition process. We do have every parcel, and these are small parcels. These are lakeside, kind of riparian, right parcels or natural parcels that, across the street. Every one of those is appraised. We use Florida appraisal and acquisition services for that reputable appraising company to identify all those parcels, and then we worked individually with every property owner to negotiate the purchase prices. Eminent domain does not come into play in that in any way, shape, or form. In fact, on the easternmost side of Lake Albert, there were property owners who did not want to, to sell off, you know, their, their lakeside portion of the property. And in those cases, we simply stopped that negotiation and, and worked to improve the small sidewalk that was there. So we worked with every single property owner through there. It was an extremely cooperative and engaged collaborative process. Andy Palmer sat with countless residents going through that project with them. And to your point, I've been here going on, I'm now entering my 25th year in administration with the city. Never once used eminent domain during that period. And looking back historically, I don't know that the city of Winter Haven has ever exercised eminent domain on an individual parcel. If we can't acquire a piece of property through an outright negotiated purchase, we don't acquire the property. 370 acres Bradco Farms negotiated purchase, 154 acres of astute financial negotiated process to, to purchase that. The Bennett property that you approved for zoning and land, or, yeah, for zoning and land use, again, purchased that from the Bennett family. So we don't, it's, eminent domain is more a function of the state, typically with major roadway projects, or perhaps the county with major county transportation projects.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I just, I take it personally when there's, you know, I'm sorry, I'm passionate about that part, that, but it's just, this is my hometown, and I just, that drives me crazy when somebody, you know, makes those accusations. So I'm proud of the city and everything that we do, and we respect our residents and, and property owners. And I, I just couldn't be more proud to, to live in the city of Winter Haven. So that's, I'm done.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna start out by adding something to what you just said. I've been here for 23 years. And Commissioner Dantzler knows that the major reason, reason, in my opinion, that that park, that that trail was never built is because the people that owned the property were not willing to give anything up, sell it, or donate it, or any other way. They did not want that trail. And so the city of Winter Haven, we did not try to eminent domain or anything else to get it. So 23 years later, here we are. The people that owned the property is the reason that that trail is there. We never could have done it without negotiating, getting those... is there. We never could have done it without negotiating, getting those people to either sell. Some of them donated. And I do know this for a fact, that years ago, they absolutely majority, said, no way. No way. No way we're going to have no trail around our lake. So I just wanted to chime in on that. And I do have a little experience with eminent domain, too. Yes, with the water cooperative. And there are times that it has to take place to get water all over this county, the transmission lines. You don't own all the property, but that's a story for another time. But since I mentioned the PRWC, I did have a meeting, and I've been selected to chair a couple of the committees. So I'm gonna do that. And attended the new employee luncheon. And one of my favorite things is to go to the Veterans Day celebration and have lunch with the veterans. So I went over and had lunch at Lake Howard Heights for the Veterans Day celebration. I've already mentioned the Lake Albert Trail. The food was good from the police department luncheon, and the state of the city address was good. And there's something else that you all have done, T., with the website, that people just need to know. There is so much information that's available, that people don't know, I, I don't think they know about. Projects and everything else. I mean, we need to, we need to make sure, I know y'all are doing it, but I'm saying, I do know this. No matter how hard you try, you're not going to reach everybody. I don't care what you do. You're not going to reach everybody. And the fact of the, the, the garage study that, that was done, man, we did spend money for that. We spent money. I was here. We spent money because we felt that there was going to be a need. So we spent the money, and here we are. And a lot of people weren't here at the end, but some people were. Jesse gone? Yeah, she's gone. But at any rate, it is what it is. And that's all I have. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, nothing this evening.
One more thing. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
I was gonna chime in there. Thank you, sir. Likewise, to everyone.
Okay. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Couple items, if you'll indulge me. Great comments from our business community and residents this evening, and that's why we have this process. This is about being transparent and hearing concerns and support, and all that will come back to you in, in report for the next meeting. Couple things that came up, wayfinding. Mr. Marcelo had mentioned that, and that is something that our CRA staff is, is working on at present time. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with representatives from Lakeland Area Mass Transit District regarding the circulator route that we've been discussing, as well as microtransit. So yes, all those things are occurring at the same time. We did do a safety audit on the existing parking garage to make improvements to that with lighting. That's what brought about a lot of the improvements we did with the, the resealing of that building. And we recognize that if you're going to have parking structures, everything you can do to put as much natural or artificial light into that is important. Also look forward to, as we look to support our small businesses, what may be coming back to the commission and the CRA board at some point in the next month or so, hopefully with some concepts for some new grant-type programs that specifically target benefiting our local small businesses. You mentioned Thanksgiving, and city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday. However, myself and Deputy City Manager will be available to address concerns, should you have any that come up during that time. I do want to take an opportunity this evening to introduce you to a new employee. So we have with us this evening our brand-new Fire Marshal, Jeremiah Perez. So I'm going to give Chief Newbrand an opportunity to make that introduction. But as you know, the Fire Marshal is an extremely important part of our organization, works with all of our businesses, certainly investigates any fires that we have. And we are grateful to have filled that role with Mr. Perez. So Chief Newbrand?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I know it's been a long night, so I'm going to keep it kind of short for you. But we're really blessed to be able to add our new Fire Marshal to our administrative staff and team. Want to take the opportunity to introduce you to him, put the face with the name, as you'll see him out in the community. But his entire goal is really to strengthen the safety in the businesses and the community around here. Comes with about 10 years' experience in fire prevention practices, served as an assistant Fire Marshal, as well as a Fire Marshal and other entities in the surrounding area. And with that, this is Jeremiah Perez, to my leftish homicide.
All right. Good evening, everyone, Commissioners, City Mayor. Thank you for having me. It's definitely a privilege. I'm blessed to be here. I am born and raised here in Winter Haven, and I'm proud to serve as a Fire Marshal. I'll do my best to not let anyone down. I'm only human, but I'll do what I can. And if you ever need anything me, from me, I'm just as transparent as the city, ask away, and I'll do what I can for you guys. Thank you.
Pretty exciting that we have a, we, in the past year, hired a Fire Chief and a Fire Marshal, both of which did not work for us previously, but reside within the community that they serve. And I think that's awesome. So, and with that, one last thing, I mentioned, you all mentioned Lake Albert Trail. Super proud of, of Andy Palmer and Julie Adams and the entire team that worked on that. People are using that like crazy. It is a, just a phenomenal asset that the community has come to enjoy. Members of the city team will be out there bright and early on Thanksgiving Day, about 7:00 AM, doing a little healthy walk jog, if any of you are so inclined to join us. We'd love to, to see you out there. Thank you.
City Clerk?
Oh, can I jump in?
Deputy City Manager.
I actually have something for you this evening. I just wanted to recognize, I think Mr. Arlen Arbiter is with us still. If you could just raise his hand, Mr. Arlen Arbiter. Yes. Oh, he was appointed to our Urban Forestry Advisory Board on the consent agenda. I just wanted to recognize him. Thank you for being here and for his commitment to that team. So that is it for me this evening. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, update. City Clerk?
I do have a lot of things, so just bear with me one second. So as you already know, the runoff election is next Tuesday, December 2nd. Just want to let you know that reminder postcards to registered voters with their specific polling locations have been mailed. Early walk-in voting, voting started today and continues until this Wednesday, November 26th. And then on Monday, December 1st, those locations are at the Pope County Supervisor of Elections Operations Center in Winter Haven, and also the Pope County Supervisor of Elections Headquarters in Bartow. For the runoff, the Pope County Government Center in Lakeland is not available this time. And of course, for early walk-in voting, the hours to do so are 8:30 AM until 4:30 PM. On Election Day, the polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So the same polling locations that serve the November 4th election will also serve in the runoff election. And those are the two, those two new locations were Spring Haven Senior Living on Havendale, and also Cypress Ridge Presbyterian Church on Cypress Gardens Boulevard. Just know that we have added three more poll workers to that location, so hopefully that'll speed things up a little bit more. I asked them to add a couple people, and then they added one more deputy. All this information and more is available on the city's website on the election page. And there's also helpful information on the Pope County Supervisor of Elections website that includes the voter lookup page. And that's where a voter can use that to go in there and verify if they're in the city limits or not. Also, tomorrow, at 11:30 AM, there's a logic and accuracy test of voting equipment at the Supervisor of Elections Operations Center in Winter Haven. Both candidates were invited to attend, and since no quorum is needed for this, Mayor Bert Song has agreed to attend to represent the canvassing board. Lastly, I just want to follow up on an email that I sent you all last week regarding the canvassing board meeting on Friday, December 5th at 10:00 AM here at City Hall. And that's to certify the runoff. And I understand most of you are attending the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference on December 4th or 5th, 4th and 5th. But this particular meeting requires a quorum of the canvassing board. So I do need to know, other than Commissioner Dassler, who will be here, who is definitely going to attend?
What time is it?
That is December 5th at 10:00 AM.
And it does need a quorum. So that's why the, the importance of it. If you made it later in the day, who'd they, could y'all make it? I know 10:00 AM on-
That, that's already been advertised, it's set in stone at time, and date.
Sorry, guys. You don't, you're not in, you don't, it doesn't matter to you.
He, he can be, he is part of the-
Oh, he can?
Yes.
You have to do the signature training?
Yes.
Have you done that already?
No, not yet. I've provided the information.
I was notified tonight.
Yes. And I sent an email last weekend and today, so.
What about Tracy? Is she out? She's going to-
She's going to the Florida League of Cities Conference as well.
Well, there you go. You need two more. You need one more.
And my issue is, I have an 8:30 meeting and then an 11:00 meeting there at the conference. So I'll be-
Really? I need one of you, not two.
I'll be part of it as the alternate. So I just need one more.
Tracy will be there.
This, this, we need to get this settled tonight, I think.
Yes.
Because we can't be wondering if we're going to have a quorum. This is an important thing. We, statutory, we've got to get, it's got, it's got to get resolved. It's an important requirement.
Well, I, I'll just say, there will, there will be a quorum here. If I have to leave and not attend one of the meetings I'm needed at, then I'll, I'll leave and get here. But we can continue to work on schedules and also check with Tracy. But worst-case scenario, I'll, I'll, I'll leave the, the meeting that I may, may need to be at to, this need to be here, so.
Mayor Commissioners, I'll, I'll lend you a hand in this. I'm an alternate. I'm scheduled to be at that same conference for the same purposes. I'll forego my attendance on Friday morning and drive back that morning for that meeting.
Well, I think, let, let's keep it as a worst case. Let's make sure Tracy, where she's at with it. And then we, we, we know we've got coverage.
That's the main issue.
I haven't done my certification as of yet, but, because if I had, yeah, but we'll get that done this week. And I'd be willing to also come back early to, to be able to do that. I know we've already expended resources to, you know, be at the, at the session. So I know that, that's important.
The problem is that the meeting is going to be here, not, won't be 15 minutes. We'll certify the election, and you guys can go back. So you're going to have to drive over and drive back.
If you really, if those meetings are so good, you just can't miss one?
I'm not driving I-4 twice a day.
I'll be here Friday. I'll be here for the meeting Friday.
So we got more people, we know what to do with. I think I will skip. You're gonna be here, Mayor? I'm gonna go to the beach or something. I, I didn't understand what you just said, Mayor Bert Song. You're-
I'll be here.
You'll, you'll be at the meeting on Friday, the, the 5th?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I may be late. The traffic's bad.
You can't be too late.
We got it figured out. John, it'll be all right.
Good. I, I agree with you. It will.
And that's all I have. Thank you very much. Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
Emergency matters not received for the agenda. Motion to adjourn.